All right, good evening. It's 6:30. Before we begin, this is a reminder that this is also a remote meeting and teleconference using Zoom pursuant to 1 MRS A Section 403-A. Welcome to the Sanford Planning Board meeting of January 3rd, 2024. Meeting will now come to order. This is a public proceeding unless the board specifically votes to go into executive session. You have the right to hear everything that is being said and to look at all the exhibits that are offered. Please notify the chair if you are unable to hear or see something. Please note that if any planning board members have potential conflicts of interest of which they are aware, they will disclose the conflict prior to the board initiating a hearing or action on an application. All persons speaking will be asked to state your name and address, and then proceed. At the sole discretion of the chair, public testimony will be limited to five minutes per speaker. For each item, the applicant will be asked to describe the project. Thereafter, the chair will ask a proponent of the project to speak, followed by opponents, and then those who are neither for nor against, but who may want to ask a question or make a general comment. Everyone who wants will have an opportunity to speak to the board through the chair. Any questions must go through the chair, who will then decide at what point to either ask staff or the applicant to respond. The chair may wait until after testimony has concluded to seek answers to any questions that are raised by the public or board members. Please note that rudeness, uncivil behavior, clapping, cheering, booing, etc., will not be tolerated, and if these behaviors occur, the chair at his sole discretion may terminate the hearing and reschedule for another date. In addition, the chair at his sole discretion will limit repetitious comments, though it is entirely appropriate for an individual to indicate that he or she agrees with the previous speaker. Prior to closing the public hearing, the chair will ask if there are any new comments. Then the applicant will be allowed to make a single rebuttal in response to testimony which was provided. Once the public hearing, the portion of the meeting is closed, the chair will accept no additional public comment. However, a member of the board at the chair's discretion may ask the applicant or a member of the public to respond to a question. This will not reopen public comment. Planning board decisions are based solely on whether an applicant has provided sufficient evidence to meet the requirements of local, state, and federal laws. In this regard, public testimony is most effective when it considers the impacts of the project in light of Sanford subdivision site plan, shoreland, or zoning ordinances, and other relevant regulations. After the board discusses the merits of each project, it will vote on written findings of fact, since the findings may substantially affect any appeals rights. And also, as a matter of courtesy, the board asks that those attending the meeting not leave until the board has adopted the findings for the project you are interested in. After the planning board makes its final decision, any reconsideration by the board must be made at their next regularly scheduled meeting. If anyone wishes to appeal the board's final decision, he or she must do so within 30 days. The city's ordinances and comprehensive plan are available on the city's website and in the Planning and Development Department's office at 919 Main Street. Remember, this is a public proceeding. You have the right to hear and see what is happening, and we welcome public participation. All right, so the first item on our agenda is the election of officers. So we'll start with the chair's position.
Nominate Tom Morgan for chair.
I second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor? You can vote.
Yep.
All right, 7-0. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, next is vice chair.
Yes.
Do you want it?
Yes.
I nominate Crystal as a vice chair.
Second.
All in favor? 7-0.
Thank you.
All right, last is secretary.
I nominate Lenny.
Second.
All in favor? 7-0. All right, that was quick. All right, so next is the adoption of a planning board bylaws. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve as is.
Sec.
All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor? 7-0. Adoption of the 2024 calendar. Do I have a motion?
July 3rd's out.
Sounds good. I saw there was a question mark in there. We'll make that note.
Will there be two meetings in July or just the one?
Just the one.
Just one meeting in July, okay.
Yeah.
But do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? All right, minutes from April 19th, 2023. I think the Jack, Lenny, Jace, Crystal, and I were all in attendance.
Motion to-
Kyle was not here, so can't vote.
Motion to approve, minutes from April 19th, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, so Todd, you can't vote on this one.
Right.
All in favor? 5-0, and with two extensions. All right, now on to new business. File R6-41 Railroad Ave Inventory Analysis.
Jamie, do you want to orient us on this?
Yes, the applicant is proposing to divide our R641 into a six-lot residential subdivision. Some of this will be accessed from Railroad Ave, and some of it will be accessed from a proposed private way off of Ridley Road. This is inventory analysis, so it will be a minor subdivision that comes back for approval as such after it's approved tonight, if it's approved tonight.
All right, thank you.
All right, well, what he said. For the record, my name is Eric Sari from Alts Engineering. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, T-Bolt Properties and Investments LLC. We're talking about a parcel between Ridley Road and Railroad Ave right on the Alfred line. I don't know if you guys, oh, there we go, right on the screen. Right on the top of the screen there, we have the Alfred Town Line. That is also a parcel controlled by the applicant, currently undergoing subdivision in the town of Alfred right now. The rest of the property is, for the most part, upland, with the exception of those chunks of dark green which you see there. Those are wetlands. On the far left-hand side, the west-hand side near Railroad Ave, that is a little stream that runs through there. That is draining an off-site wetland complex to the north in Alfred, primarily in Alfred. We think that was created by a farmer's dam quite a while ago, maybe 150, 200 years ago. There's a little bit of open water in there. The rest of that is swamp, so that does drain that there. The rest of the site has been heavily logged, with the exception of the west-hand side. So on the east side, the right-hand side towards Ridley, there are really extensive open areas, completely clear-cut, and the rest of it was selective logging going down through the middle. So what we're proposing, six lots, three of them on Railroad on the left, three of them on Ridley on the right. On the left-hand side, we'd have one with its own driveway from Railroad. Two of them would share a common drive. The reason for that is there's a wetland impact there to get across that little stream that I talked about earlier. So we figured rather than have two, we just combine it into one impact, just to make more sense and a little bit less impact. And then on the right-hand side, on the Ridley Road side, we have one lot accessing it directly from Ridley and another on a private right-of-way, which does extend down the hill to access the last of the two, sorry, the two last building sites on the property. There are some steep slopes here and there, but for the most part, we have some really good building envelopes. Soils are good. We have passing test bits for every single lot. NAP came back with no direct hits on any endangered flora, so no endangered plants. I have walked the site. I didn't see anything that really struck out at me. There is turtle habitat to the north, though, on that swamp that I was talking about before. Seeing that this site was logged, there are also no vertical pools. It's not really the greatest turtle habitat, so I think that IF&amp;W is really focusing on the piece to the north there. We have not had a wildlife biologist look at it yet, but I don't think we're going to come back with any positive hits. It's just not the right kind of habitat for it. They like standing stagnant water, and we don't really have that here on this site. Utilities would be obviously from Ridley and Railroad, very simple. Wells and septics, like you'd expect on a site like this. There's no water or sewer out there right now. And then, of course, we'd have to build the common driveways at the crossing here, as well as the road going down the right-of-way. Those roads have been designed, and we are about to file before the wetland impact with DEP, so we expect that to go in probably next week or the week after. That's pretty much it. This is a pretty straightforward one, guys. There's no, you know, road or anything that we need to build, no public infrastructure of any kind. We did have some comments from staff that seemed fairly minor, easy to address. I think we'll be addressing those in the next month or two, and we'll come back to you for preliminary when we're ready. So, any questions?
We'll hold off on questions till after the public hearing?
Perfect.
Is there a public hearing?
There is a public hearing.
Is it?
No.
Oh, there's a public hearing on this one.
Not for inventory.
Yeah. Oh, all right, well, then I'll-
You guys can ask questions.
Before I bring it to the board, the staff, anything they would like to add, clarifications or anything?
Sure, I can do that. So just one thing that I will note is that in the rural residential zone, all subdivisions with a net area of 10 acres or more must either be a cluster subdivision or adhere to the development standards of 28011-2, including access, 40-foot vegetated buffer, preservation of tree line, and lot layouts that respect the existing natural and/or historic features of a site. So I know that there are lot lines shown on the inventory analysis plan, but we haven't really dove into those details yet. It looks like maybe that's the case, but if you wanted to go the cluster subdivision route, there are open space requirements that would need to be.
Yeah, we looked at that. It's just too disjointed a property to really make it work effectively, so we opted for the more conventional layout in this case. I do believe that we do meet all the requirements, though, of your standard subdivision rules, so we'll run through this with preliminary, of course, but if something needs to be tweaked, we'll tweak it.
That's fair. And then the other point is that because there's multiple access points here with different driveways and private ways, the minimum street frontage for existing local streets is 200 feet, and 100 feet for proposed local streets. So your private way would be, each lot needs to have 100 feet of frontage on their private way. And then, I wasn't sure about, I think it's Lot 2, where the private way sort of meets Ridley Road, whether or not that parcel there has 200 feet on the existing. So on your preliminary subdivision, you'll just want to make sure that the street frontages are all dimensioned.
Yeah, we label everything. I think I've got adequate frontage for all the lots.
That, and the, so shared driveways and private way plans will both need HOA documents just showing the shared maintenance and snow storage responsibilities. Otherwise, I think pretty much everything will be covered by preliminary subdivision, so.
I have one more comment to add as well. They are requesting a waiver for 27515E, which is sources of fire protection. It is my recommendation via discussion we had at Site Plan and with the Fire Chief and the Water District that the planning board not grant the requested waiver, because the closest fire hydrant is located approximately 1,600 feet from the subdivision, which is much greater than the normal distance allowed to not have to do some other source of fire protection.
All right, thank you, Jamie. Anything from any other staff? Okay. All right, planning board, anything from?
I guess my only question is looking at that development road from Ridley. Will it have the proper pitch to meet the private way standards? It looks like it's pretty steep.
Yeah, yeah. We designed it at 12%. I believe that meets it.
12 maximum, and then there's certain average?
Yeah, you need to flare out at the top to flatten out, and then the bottom might flatten out as well. Not quite done yet, but we're almost there.
There was a little bit of discussion at Site Plan about the grades and stuff as well. We do require them to put the fire truck turn-on templates on the private ways, and in this case, we asked them to make sure that the tail end of ladder 37, tower 37, doesn't bottom out in that swale as well. So that will be shown on the final plan.
Anything else from planning board?
I do not have any questions.
Well, I guess my only question is from the staff, to staff, for fire protection, what would be the options?
So our ordinance gives developers several options. The one most often chosen is residential sprinkler systems, but our ordinance gives the option of residential sprinkler systems. It gives the option of a fire pond, and it gives the option of a fire cistern. Fire ponds and fire cisterns come with some escrow required accounts to be put in place to make sure that they hold water, which technically makes it more expensive than installing the sprinkler systems. So in history, most of our projects in the last half a decade, a decade, have been sprinkler systems, although we do have two fire cisterns out there and a few older fire ponds.
Yeah, we're 99% sure we'll end up with sprinklers here.
Anything else on the board? All right, so I guess we don't have anything to vote on here, so we'll look forward to hearing what you bring us for preliminary.
All right, sounds great, guys. Appreciate it.
All right, the next one is a public hearing, is for File R15-79A, Jagger Mill Road, Fletcher Farm. Jamie, do you want to orient us on this one?
Yep, so this is a six-lot residential subdevelopment off of Jagger Mill Road. This is kind of Phase 2 of Spencer Hill Estates, what was once Fletcher Farm 1 and 2. So they got approval for Spencer Hill Estates two or three years ago now. That project's been built out, so now they're coming in for Fletcher Farm as Phase 2. It also involves a private way off of Jagger Mill Road to provide access and frontage for, not frontage access, for two out of the, oh, three out of the six lots, I guess. This did go through Site Plan a month ago now with recommendation to approve. And this is preliminary, so if approved tonight, they will resubmit with final, with the suggested amendments to the plan.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, all. Rob McSorley with Sebego Technics. I'm representing the Patterson Companies LLC. Tonight, we have Mark Patterson and Steve Ork of the company with us, and also online, I should have Connor Ritter if we have any questions on engineering that I can't handle. So as Jamie said, we are proposing a five-acre or five-lot subdivision on Jagger Mill Road. It's a 2.41-acre approximate site. It's in the residential development district, and there is the shoreline overlay zone. You'll see along the front of the lots, right along here, that's the limits of the shoreline overlay district, and we have to the front side of those lots along Yager Mill will be the preserve area. The site, it was previously reviewed for wetlands. There were no wetlands determined to be on the site. The configuration is such that we will have two of the lots, which are lots 1 and 2, which are to the right-hand side, will share a driveway access off Jagger Mill Road, and then there'll be a private way that goes back in lots 3, 4, and 5 will be access of the private way. Also, along the frontage there along Jagger Mill, the layout is such that we will have a bus stop there, and there's a widened pavement section area there for the refuge pickup for the project and whatnot. For the permitting outside of the city, we have reviewed the site relative to historical resources, natural areas program, and IF&amp;W, and nothing came up on those ends. Project will require an MDEP stormwater permit by rule, pretty typical of these projects and whatnot. We did go through a Site Plan review. We don't think there were any really major comments. This plan that you see is what has come out of those comments. We anticipate submitting this in the coming week. Some of the comments were on the, for the access onto Jagger Mill Road to show the site distance requirements for the two accesses. That was on a prior version of our subdivision plan, and that is going to be added back on. Typical cross-section profile for the private way. Some revised stormwater pond modeling in culvert design, looking at the culvert design. The stormwater pond there that you see grew a little bit after we did that reevaluation for the project. One of the things I had mentioned at the entrance of the project, we had a place for garbage cans and refuge pickup that was more in on the private way. The understanding from the city is that they won't go onto private property, so we have a widened pavement area there along Jagger Mill where the refuge containers would be placed for garbage pickup. Minor comments on utilities. We added another manhole at the tail end of that single driveway coming off the private way. We had prior had to clean out. They asked for a manhole in lieu. Water services, we did originally have single lines coming across and then breaking off into utilities once we got across the roadway. Utility company likes it to be service, individual service from the main to the house, so there have been individual services now placed on the plans. And there were some other assorted details and notes, minor stuff, for the water department comments. Also, we have requested a solid waste letter from DEPW. That was one of the comments. One of the big issues was a concern over emergency access, especially to the rear of those lots 3, 4, and 5 that front along Yager but have access off the private way. Part of that, that driveway that extends to left on the plan, that was wide. It was originally much narrower. It was 16, then necked down to 12. We made it 16 all the way over, and there's the radius turning into that was increased. The engineering consultant, a Walsh engineer, Connor Ritter, has done a analysis, what we call a turning template analysis, to make sure the fire truck can pull in, back out, and get back out of the site. In fact, it can pull either way into that drive or straight ahead and make that movement in either direction. There was a comment during the staff review committee meeting relative to the bus stop. They had asked us to check with the Sanford School Department. We reached out to them, and they were okay with the single bus stop here for the five lots. We have an email relative to that. I think planning was copied on that, but if not, well included in our package. We do have the walk, a gravel walkway for the two lots to get over to the entrance to the private way, and that's where the bus pickup would be. The only comment that we haven't fully addressed yet, and we were hoping to have some discussion on this, I approached this with you previously, is what do we do on sidewalks? So other than that, the comments were really straightforward, and we believe we've addressed them all, and we'll look forward to answering any questions or coming up with solutions.
All right, I'm sure there'll be some questions after we get through the public hearing. Before we go to the public hearing, those, are there any staff comments that they want to bring up?
I think there's still a couple of outstanding things, as Rob mentioned, but could certainly be addressed in the final site plan, including like the, some of the HOA easement documentation that needs to be updated.
I didn't touch on those, because those were pretty minor.
Yeah, it's okay. I just want to make sure that the lots that have the crossover a lot to get to their house has cross-access easements. And the solid waste plan, I think we're still waiting on a response from the Director of Public Works as far as the trash pickup.
I believe I copied you on the email today.
Yep. They definitely received your email. I just don't think we have a response from them yet, so we'll need that. And private way plan has been updated with the proper personal lines, and that looks good.
This is out of that set of plans, as from our earlier email. We're finishing up the subdivision plan edits that go with this. The engineering plan's got modified first, and we're cleaning up the subdivision plan, and we'll be resubmitting that within a week.
And then you touched on sidewalks, but just as a refresher, this proposed subdivision falls within the designated growth area of Sanford's comprehensive plan, and is therefore required to install sidewalks per 27551C2J. The planning board may waive this requirement if they determine there are adequate alternative provisions for pedestrians outside of the right-of-way, or that the scale of the project makes these sidewalks unnecessary. Staff would prefer safe passage to the bus stop be maintained, and encourages the applicant to find a suitable path to the existing bus stop associated with the Spencer Hill subdivision, or to submit written verification from the bus company that the proposed bus stop on site can be utilized. So that's up for discussion.
All right. Any other staff comments before we open the public hearing?
I don't know if Matt Preventer wanted to speak up. I think he had maybe a couple of concerns with the proposed infiltration basin, and whether or not it's that or a retention pond.
And that's why it grew. We did take another look at that and thought we were a little liberal on the calculations. Connor can remark on that if the board has questions on that. I believe he's online.
Well, we got Matt Preventer online. Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, the only thing I was going to bring up, and it sounds like they've addressed it, but this can also be handled, obviously, because it's just preliminary and can be handled in between that and final. But the biggest thing was, I believe there were some test pits done in the area of that pond that showed some higher groundwater, which would make it, you know, difficult to get the separation of groundwater for infiltration. So I'm guessing that's why it grew, was probably it became more of a detention pond than an infiltration pond. But yeah, I can look into that and work it out. But it looks like it's been accounted for now, which was my concern, if it did need to grow more, which it sounds like it did. Yeah, I just was concerned that it might change lot lines or affect other things, but it sounds like it's been, sounds like it's been addressed.
All right, thanks, Matt. All right, I will declare the public hearing open, and ask that anybody that wants to speak in favor of this project, anybody online or in the room? All right, anybody who would like to speak in opposition to this project? Anybody who would like to speak neither for nor against this project would like to ask a question, or? Go ahead, Diane.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry. I'm having computer problems tonight. I wasn't able to look at the full map. I would, is there a trip study that's required for this? For traffic?
No, this project is not of scale that would require a traffic impact study.
Okay. Does the board have any concerns about, like, the site distance between these driveways and the rate of traffic and the accidents that happen on this road?
Diane, that's something that we would, we can definitely discuss when we get done with the public hearing.
Thank you. I'd like you to discuss it. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Anybody else who would like to make a comment or ask a question? Okay, I'll declare the public hearing closed and open it up for discussion by the board.
The first thing I noticed right off was that the lot, the private way services four lots per ordinance. The subdivision road can only service three lots. I know there's three houses there, but there is four lots. The proposed future development is its own separate lot, so there's four lots on this private way.
I believe they are proposing to combine the rear lot with the open space for Spencer Hill Estates, so that, in fact, will become part of that lot. So we're not, they're not required frontage off of the private way or access off the private way yet. private way, yet. If in the future they ever come back for an amendment to create development in the rear lot section, then they would have to convert this from a public, a private way to a public street, to then be able to access it through the private way.
Okay.
The, the lot currently would have access from Spencer Hill Estates through a fifty-foot wide.
Yeah, if they, if they combined, because I mean, I notice it's still separated, so it's, so, but combined, it does still have the access that we, that was included the last development, so.
Correct. We also ask, request that they leave the required right of way width for the future, because?
Yeah, because you need two entrances, if you want to go above fifteen.
Well, they'll actually have two entrances still, I believe, on the other side, but even still, if they decide to upgrade this current private way to a local street, they'll have the required fifty feet of right of way in order to then pave and make the necessary improvements.
I'm good with that.
I have a question in regards to snow removal. What is the plan? And then the second question is, will it impact the turnaround?
Snow removal?
Yes.
The plan would be, there would be an HOA here, as part of the HOA documents and whatnot, they would have provisions in there for maintenance of common areas, and one of the things would be the snow plough, so it would be handled by the association. And they would maintain the whole T-turnaround area to make sure that it's accessible during wintertime and whatnot.
Thank you.
Snow storage was laid out on the plan that we saw.
I was just trying to find it.
Now, can we bring the other, the plan back up that we were? Right here. Snow storage, snow storage.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, anything else for the board?
I got one question. Where's the bus stop on that plan?
It was a?
Is there, is there a designated bus stop on that plan?
Yeah.
The bus stop will be at the end of the private way. You'll see an expanded area up off on the side for students to stand on, and then when the bus comes, they would walk from that enlarged area to the, the right-hand side of the private way to get onto the bus.
So, this isn't like a shelter, I mean, it's actually just a place to stand for the bus?
It's a place for them to stand, yeah.
Okay.
So, I'll bring up sidewalks. You guys know my opinion, I don't like sidewalks to nowhere, and I especially don't like the idea of a sidewalk going to Jagger Mill, which is probably one of the most unsafe roads to walk on. There is no existing sidewalk on the road. However, on the access road with future development, and you have, you increase the number of units being served by this road potentially in the future, I think that would be the adequate time to add sidewalks. Right now, there's three houses. It's not that unsafe. Jagger Mill is way more unsafe to walk on than.
And there is a provision, sorry, there is that provision for the side, the path between the two driveways, so the private way and the two-lot driveway.
Yeah.
Yeah. We do have a gravel path to keep the children safe, get over and then.
Yeah, for the, for the bus stop especially.
And then, once again, if that gets developed, that will be expanded, and then you would put a sidewalk at least on one side of that private way.
Yeah, because, I mean, right now, there's three houses being served on that, the traffic count's going to be pretty low, I mean, there'll be, there's kids, they're likely playing in that road. But, you know, you, you develop the back lot, in the future, you add a substantial amount more traffic, I think sidewalks should be considered at that point.
I think we're okay with that condition.
But.
And again, just for clarification, if they ever do anything on the rear lot, they would have to come and amend this private way plan to, to make it meet public street standards, which that could be discussed at that time.
Is that gravel pathway going to be maintained in the winter?
HOA.
It'll be part of the HOA documents that it needs to be maintained along with the, the gravel private way and whatnot, so that there's clear access during the winter.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think for, for me, the, the critical piece isn't going to be that, the, the agreement with the bus stop, or the, the school district, that I don't want kids walking down to the corner of Spencer Hill and Jagger Mill to get the bus.
Yeah.
That's a bad idea.
We have the, the email that all forwarded on it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't even like the idea of the sidewalk to encourage people to walk to Jagger Mill Road.
Right.
Because that is just a sketchy road to walk on.
So, I know the, are we, we'll set on the sidewalks for the moment? Anybody else have any comments on sidewalks before I change the topic?
My comment would have been, would have been on Jagger Mill Road itself, but that's, that's a separate discussion, I guess, for the city, but.
Okay.
Well, do we want to discuss if it's not going to be a sidewalk, but? What if, I'm trying to think about what we did on the other project, where it was like a safety walking pass, like a designated area for walking, even though it wasn't the actual materials of?
Yeah, we, we, there, there are flexibilities in that, it doesn't have to be a paved sidewalk you would see on a main street, so this, I believe, meets, would meet the requirements of the ordinance to have that safe, because this is what it's really about, right?
Yes.
It's about a safe, safe pedestrian movement.
Well, Mike, one of my, as I'm looking at this, and I see that storage area, it looks like for lot number two, so between lot number two and the road, there's a snorage, storage, snow storage, my apologies. Would that take away from that space that the children would need to walk down the road with safety? Would that impact?
Behind lot number two?
Right here, this little guy right here, snow, snow storage.
Yeah, and the walkway is here.
I'm talking about if they're going from here to here.
I see what you're saying.
So, if, if the road narrows due to snowbanks, and then there's going to be snow storage, would that impact the area?
I think that the number of, the, the amount of traffic that is on a three-house for all intents and purposes driveway is going to be so small.
What if they all have like ten kids, Tom?
I don't think that's going to fit in this development.
But, yeah.
Your mic's on.
It's on.
Oh, yeah, sorry. What, Jason?
I don't know, it's about same traffic as a three-unit apartment building, in a dri, playing in a driveway, so. Again, if the internal site is developed, then, you know, you have better circulation internally for pedestrians, you have a lot more trip counts, then it becomes an issue. I would definitely want to see a sidewalk in the future for, in, you know, future development. But I, I live on a road with six houses, and we might get three cars an hour, and the kids play on the road. But, so I, and we don't have a sidewalk. So, I'm struggling to require, I mean, that's a long sidewalk for three houses.
Is, can I, is there other guardrail opportunities? What you're looking for, what it sounds like we're looking for is a, a buffer for just exposures from the road to that walkway. One, push the walkway back further into the property to keep, and then create a buffer off of the road, because if we are talking about weather conditions, snow plows pushing large amounts of snow, that walkway is going to be tough to maintain, number one, kids are going to meander any way they can, cars may not see, and it'll build up, so either guardrail in front of the road as, and then a walkway, or push that walkway back. Also, personally, I don't like gravel, but.
Yeah.
As a, a maintainable, long-term product, but maybe that's something that can be addressed down the road.
Yeah, and so, just to make note, the other thing was, the, the other question is whether the internal private way needs sidewalks on both sides the whole length. That, that's the other question, and that's why I'm arguing that we don't, I don't want to see, I don't want to require.
So, just to address that one, the one comment about the Jagger Mill and the, how far is that path off the road? It looks like it's quite a ways.
It, I can't say, there's a swale, there's actually going to be a swale between the edge of pavement and where that, that gravel walkway will be. I do not think you're going to pile up that much snow where somebody cannot maintain back on that lot for, for sidewalk.
Okay. That, that was my assumption looking at this, but I can't see any dimensions.
According to the scale, it looks like probably twelve, fifteen feet.
Oh, that's a, okay.
It's, that's a lot of area of snow.
That's a pretty good distance, so it's, yeah.
Got it.
Okay. Any last discussions on the sidewalks? Anybody?
Can I chime in real quick, sorry? If you do propose to use a material other than Portland, Portland cement, concrete sidewalks, you'll also need approval from Director of Public Works on that.
We'll reach out.
So, while you're reaching out about the trash, you can also ask about that, but, so it needs to be approved by the planning board, but with also approval from Public Works.
Question for you, do we need to do an official waiver for the sidewalks and material?
As part of the final application request, yes.
Okay, we'll handle that.
And just, just as a note, when you reach out to Public Works, make sure you let them know that the sidewalk is on private property.
Yep.
And not within the right of way.
Yep.
All right, so I'll throw out the one last comment that was brought during the public hearing, is the right of, the, the sightlines. I think you have here, I, I can't see it in the picture because it's too small on the screen, but.
I'm not sure if.
I think you have just that it's with, that it meets the requirement and doesn't actually have the dimensions. Yeah, it just says in excess of three hundred fifty feet.
Yeah. We actually have the actual dimensions on a prior version of the subdivision plan. When we submitted in for the initial submittal, those numbers were washed, we're going to put those back on, but we are in excess of that, but we will put the actual number for both, both accesses.
And just as a reminder, Matt Preventor, Assistant City Engineer, he verifies all those numbers meet ordinance and state requirements.
Okay. All right, anything else by the board?
One more question. I saw something in notes, I think you just touched on it briefly, trash collection, is that going to be public trash collection or private?
I believe the applicant is planning on public trash pickup, and we have a requirement in our subdivision ordinance that they receive approval from the Department, Director of Public Works, that the added refuse can fit within our current contract, and so they have contacted the Director of Public Works, we're just waiting on a response. And they have also allotted an area on the side of the road there to be able to accommodate at least the three parcels, I think that's the plan, just for those three on the end of the private way.
Yep.
So, pending confirmation from Matt Hill, they'll have public pickup.
If Matt's okay with that, those three houses would have to take their trash and put it in a, in a common area for the town to pick up.
Let me do a pickup, yeah.
Yep, it has to be accessible from a public road.
Okay.
On the drawing, it was on the left side of the, when you're facing the public way, it was on the left side, opposite the school bus stop.
Basically, just a wide apron there at the end of the private way, yep.
All right, any other, any other comments? Do we have findings of fact?
There are no findings of fact because it's preliminary. We do have a recommended motion.
All right.
The Plannin Board accept the information in the December four, twenty twenty-three summary report, grant the requested waivers, and find the proposed preliminary major subdivision file R-1579A to construct a five-lot subdivision, has satisfied the requirements of Article six of the subdivision ordinance and Article sixteen of the zoning ordinance, subject to the following conditions. In major final subdivision plan application, provide revised plans that adequately respond to issues raised in the review, which are part of the following conditions of approval. A, address concerns raised in the Assistant City Engineers memo. B, address concerns raised in the Code Enforcement Officer memo. C, address concerns raised by the Sanford Water District's memo. D, address concerns raised by the Sanford Sewer District memo. E, address concerns raised by the Sanford Fire Chief's memo. And then F, address concerns raised in the Plannin Staff Report.
Question to approve.
Oh, second.
Any discussion? I will throw out just one thing, I know we're going to waive the sidewalks at this point, but that sidewalk that goes between those two lots is going to be a, that's going to be a hard necessity in the, in the future. Just go on the record saying that, just because we're waiving it, don't take that out, so. All right, all in favor? Seven zero.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so moving on to public hearing for ordinance revision two eighty dash eleven dash six, urban zone to change to the required front yard setback to a maximum of twenty feet where the uniform setback relationship does not exist. I know this is something that we've discussed a while ago, and Aaron's got some things prepared, so.
Okay, thank you. So, this is not, I'll precursor, not part of the early two thousand and three ordinance updates, which we've been reviewing and still have one more item on the agenda to review, but it has just come up in other pre-apps and potential development projects that in the urban zone currently, we have a maximum front setback of twenty feet, where uniform setback does not exist. And we also have a provision that requires the off-street parking to be located, you see that, not between the front of the building and the lot line. So, if a, if a parcel is being redeveloped, and they're building a new building, they have to put the parking in the back of the building. We do have several parcels in the urban zone that can't necessarily fit parking in the back and also a twenty-foot setback, but that is what they would be held to, and therefore the parcel is sort of not developable. I'll also make an argument that if you think of the most urban buildings that we have in Sanford, which would be right in the downtown core, they're technically non-conforming at a zero-foot setback, whereas now, in our current ordinance, they would be required to have twenty feet. There's enough, maybe enough buildings there that they could get the uniform setback requirement, which if you're wondering what that is, it's, you take the average setbacks of the nine lots, so two on either side of the subject lot, and then the five across the street, and then you make the average of that, and if there's one single setback in those nine lots that is greater than the average of the nine, then you can remove that. It's a fun calculation for people to make, but basically if there's two parcels that have a very large setback, and all the rest of the parcels have a small, you're still kind of stuck with the twenty-foot setback.
Going to have to read that a few times.
And just for clarification, this is our existing definition, we're not proposing to change the definition, that is the existing definition. That was modified a few years ago. We used to just do the, the two on both sides of the subject lot on that side of the street. It was modified a few years ago to include the five lots across the street.
Okay.
So, with the proposed change to alter it to a maximum of twenty-feet setback, I think there are, we know the urban zone is very large, there's a lot of parcels that you would potentially want a larger twenty, a setback that's larger than twenty feet, but I think in those instances, we would use the uniform setback calculation, and they would get to a conclusion that it would be in, compatible with the surrounding properties.
Right.
Public hearing.
Yep, so we'll open the public hearing, declare the public hearing open, if there's anybody who would like to speak in favor of this change, in the room or on Zoom? Anybody who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance change? Anybody would like to make a comment, ask a question? Okay, I'll declare the public hearing closed and open it up for planning board discussion.
Do we even need a setback requirement from the front? If we're having so much trouble with this uniform setback, minimum, maximum, why not just remove the setback requirement altogether?
That is a potential option. Currently, the only dimensional requirement we have in the urban zone is the front setback. I guess the, the intent of the ordinance is to try to promote an urban environment, which has the buildings close to the street with the parking to the rear. If there is no minimum, maximum, then somebody could come in and propose to put the. If there is no minimum, maximum, then somebody could come in and propose to put the, the property, say a hundred feet back, like, like the existing Hanaford and CBS properties.
But they'd be held to the, no parking in the front?
Yes. Potentially. So if we get in, so say it's, say it's not Hanaford. Say it's, I want to build a single-family house on, on the Hanaford lot. Say Hanaford decides to relocate, they tear it down, I want to build a house. All the other houses on Main Street in that area are close to the road, but I want to put it way out back because I don't want to be close to the road.
I mean, technically, the house next to Hanaford's like seventy-five to a hundred feet back.
Again, not a great example. I was hoping you wouldn't catch me on that one, but. But, but yes, so it, it is an option to eliminate a minimum or a maximum. I guess my recommendation would, to keep something.
My thought process is most people are going to try to maximize the use of the lot. I mean, that's the most cost-effective. And so to maximize it, you're going to be utilizing the majority of the square footage of the lot as much as possible. And most lots are small. So I, I think, and we discussed this last year or the year before when we, this came up, and I think that this is one of those areas where it was intended to be maximum originally, and some, it somehow got transposed as minimum in the ordinance, and that's just what it's been, and now we're cleaning it up because.
Yeah.
You know, a, a twenty-foot minimum on the front in the, in the urban zone when basically everything else is zero or next, you know, near it, it really makes sense. So this is, makes it more right, I guess.
And again, it does have the uniform provision, so if it is in an area where everything is further back, they could keep the character by using the uniform provision. So the uniform used to allow it to go closer to the street. In this case, the uniform will allow it to go further from the street.
Any other?
I mean, I'm okay with the change. I personally, since it's not a safety, for safety purposes or anything like that, I mean, I don't, I don't see the need for it at all. So, but I'd rather see this changed than no change at all.
The way it is?
Yeah.
All right. Any other comments? All right. Do we have a motion?
So I didn't do a suggestive motion on the case of zone changes. It's a recommendation to the City Council that the Plannin Board recommends the City Council approve the zoning change. So rarely, we typically just take a, an informal vote saying, yes, we're, we're all in agreement that it should change, or, or, or it's a split vote, or, or just really the, the temperature of the Plannin Board so that we can relay that to the City Council.
This might be an odd question, but is this part of the comprehensive plan?
It's not part of the, I mean, it will be something that we will discuss during the comprehensive plan, is like.
Plan.
Boundaries of the urban zone and what the goals of the urban zone, if there's any other changes. But just for the time being, it seems like as I'm, you know, combing through all of our zones for the LD two thousand and three thing, this kind of stuck out as a, well, that's, you know, twenty-foot max, required setback is not a very urban standard. So for an urban zone, it would make more sense to promote buildings closer to the street, and therefore it would be a maximum twenty-foot setback. But yes, other topics will come up as far as the urban zone and the comprehensive plan.
And the reason I ask that is because I'm, I believe that any decision that we make tonight would impact future decisions, because I don't want to make a decision tonight if we're just going to change it in a year or so when we essentially circle back to the same conversation. So with that said, I'm happy to approve what's being proposed for the sake of more conformity, consistency with what will happen now versus in five years.
I think a topic that might be discussed during the comprehensive plan is whether or not everything that's currently in the urban zone should really be in the urban zone, which, or if we need a whole new zone, not to change zones, but just create an entirely new zone. So that might address the issue where we're trying to think of lots right now where we want a setback in the urban zone, and it's hard to think of those areas, but that would be, I think, the area of town that would potentially be up for a new zone, a new sort of commercial district.
That makes sense.
Does this only apply to residential properties?
Nope. This is.
So like McDonald's wouldn't be able to, because the, say the property on either side of where McDonald's is, we're right on the road, which, you know, Dairy Queen's kind of close, you wouldn't be able to have the drive-through where it is because they wouldn't be allowed to put the building back. So.
Well, there's, there's a couple of things with that. There's the rebuild of a nonconforming structure, so.
I'm, I'm thinking of something else coming to town.
If, if McDonald's decided to relocate and somebody else wanted to come in and rebuild it, potentially they could put it back in the same spot. Again, you have Dairy Queen that's close, but you have, Prompto was setback a little bit further, you have the gas station, CN Brown.
Yeah.
So again, I think in this case, uniform would allow a slightly larger than twenty-foot further away because of the, there are a number of properties that have more than twenty feet.
I just see this as an obstacle to development, you know, in certain circumstances when, I don't know, I would like to see it removed and allow people to make use of their property as best they can. But.
As I mentioned earlier, our urban zone is already very unique in that we don't have any dimensional requirements other than the front setback. I, I wear multiple hats here now, so as code officer, that is, we get lots of calls asking, and they all kind of laugh when I say that, because we got all kinds of title people calling and, yeah, I can't find in the, in the zoning ordinance what you have for dimensional requirements in the urban zone. Well, it's because the only one you saw is the only one we have. So I mean, it's, it's not typical not to have any dimensional requirements in a zone. We already, we already went against the norm when we took away the side and, and rear and height limitations and all of that. So zoning was put in place a hundred so years ago to, to prevent, well, zoning was created because fires in New York City is why, when zoning was created. So it was created to, to put some safeguards, minimum safeguards in place to protect the public and, and the borders. Now, we're saying you can go close to the road, or, or requesting you go close to the road, so that's kind of contradicting myself in that statement, but.
Yeah. No, that's what I'm getting at, too, is like where, I, I would agree that side setbacks probably, you could argue are a safety issue, but front setback, I don't see it. I just, you know, see it as another obstacle to have to design your building around. So I think this really comes down to getting that urban feel, right? The point is to keep, make, make the urban, the downtown feel like a downtown and not like a subdivision. And, and that's really the intent here. I mean, there are, like you McDonald's, for example, they'll put, McDonald's will, will put a store up in an urban area and they will route their.
Yeah.
You, you couldn't build it like this necessarily, but they could still build a drive-through system that allowed them to do that. I mean, here's, an example would be a Roma Joe's right out here. Right there, there, the way there, theirs works is they go in and come back out. So the parking's in the back, that would be an example of an urban development of a, of a drive-through store, I think. So. Right. Anything else before? Right. So I guess let's just have a motion to, to move this so we can, do we have a motion to move this to?
Motion to approve.
Yeah. Motion to approve, second.
All right. All in favor to pass this off to City Council? Seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then the last one, last public hearing is the affordable housing density bonus discussion. LD two thousand and three, our favorite.
Our favorite. Thank you. So this is, we believe, our final piece of legislation that needs to be updated. I might find something in the weeds of updating some minor text amendments, but this is essentially proposing a whole new section to the code. It's not removing anything else, and it's not altering any existing language. It's just kind of similar to our current residential cluster development standards, where we, we have a set of standards that anywhere that residential development is allowed can utilize either the underlying zone standards or the residential cluster standards. So now there will be a, a third option of affordable housing density bonus. These are basically the minimum requirements of the LD two thousand and three legislation, which was a statewide mandate, basically, to promote housing development in Maine. So the first thing I'll touch on is the term affordable is a, an actual term. I understand housing's expensive and it's hard to wrap your head around the term affordable, but these are metrics that are set by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development that are known as HUD. They require either that all residents do not exceed eighty percent for the area median income for rentals, or a hundred and twenty percent of the area median income for owner-occupied housing. So that area median income does get recalculated on an annual basis by HUD, and the developers are all required to follow very strict standards, essentially. The affordable housing density bonus is only available in any zone which allows multifamily residential development, so it will not be allowed in the rural zones currently. It's also only allowed within the growth zone of the comprehensive plan, or it must be served by Public Water and Sewer Services if it's outside of the growth zone. We don't really have any areas outside the growth zone that also allow multifamily, so it shouldn't be a concern. It still has to abide by other standards of the underlying zone and all of the overlay zones, but the major difference is that they'll be allowed up to two-point-five times the base density of the underlying zone. And that the parking will be, the, the number of required parking spaces cannot exceed two parking spaces for every three dwelling units. There are, they can give more parking, they can provide more if that's what they feel their tenants or future homeowners would prefer, but we cannot require more than two parking spaces for every three dwelling units. I threw in the existing density bonus provision here, so in some of our underlying zones, we already have density bonus options. I leave that up to the Planning Board, whether or not the two-point-five times is on the existing density bonus, which would be pretty dense in some areas, so that would be up to interpretation. So for instance, in the residential development zone, our base density is six dwelling units per net acre, and the existing or proposed density that you have already passed on to City Council for approval is the ten dwelling units per net acre. So it'll be up to the Planning Board to decide whether the two-point-five times the base density is times six dwelling units per acre or times ten dwelling units per acre.
Fifteen or twenty-five.
And then finally, we just added in that they'll have to put it somewhere on the site plan, what the projected breakdown of units is, whether or not they'll be for rental or homeownership units.
All set?
Yep. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. So I will now open the public hearing. Is there anybody who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance change? Is there anybody who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance change or recommended ordinance change? Is there anybody who would like to ask a question or make a comment about this ordinance change? All right. I'll declare the public hearing closed and open it up for Planning Board discussion. Anything on this?
Parking.
Yes.
When we discussed ADUs, there was no requirement for parking. Was that true?
That is true. That was required by the LD two thousand and three.
But with affordable housing, there is a requirement for parking?
Yes, but it's much reduced from what our current standards are.
Okay.
So normally, our, our off-street parking requirements are based on the number of bedrooms in a house. It's one-point-five for every one bedroom, one-point-seven-five for two bedrooms, and two spaces for three-bedroom units.
Per unit. And in this case, LD two thousand and three says we can't require more than two spots for every three units, doesn't matter bedroom count. So we're down to point-six-eight parking spots per unit, not dependent on number of bedrooms.
And that's kind of what scares me with the density bonus, because you're talking sixteen parking spots for twenty-five units, roughly.
Again, the density bonus is up for discussion, whether we want to do that off of the, the generic density or, or what we're already given as a density bonus with development review. So that is a topic that I think we would need to discuss to, to determine which way you want to go with that.
This is probably going to encourage a proliferation of single-bedroom units.
The, the LD two thousand and three, we've discussed a lot, is a, is a state law statute that is trying to create affordable housing. So to create affordable housing, you have to create more units. So the legislative body thought that this was the best attempt at, at solving the, the world problem of a housing crisis we're in. We, we've discussed a lot, there, there, there's been some changes along the way, there's been some guidance updates and changes along the way. I don't suspect the state of Maine is going to get it right the first time. I think this will be a discussion that we're going to be having for, for probably years to come. This, this was a, a, what I call a shot over the bow, trying to, to solve the problems. As time progresses, more and more thought is getting put into it, but I, I think some of these guidance and regulations will probably change as, we're, we're here talking about Sanford tonight, but Maine is a very diverse state, and where some communities might be able to handle, this larger development and other communities might not. So it's, Maine is not a one-size-fits-all template. So again, I, I think that in, in the months or years to come, this, this probably will be modified. We're, we're making our best ditch effort to comply with the rules that was supposed to be in effect by January one. Obviously, we're a little bit late on that, but we're doing well compared to other municipalities.
So what are we looking at? I mean, are we looking at more units with, with more, fewer units with more bedrooms or more units with?
Just more units.
Just more units, period.
Parking.
So the, the legislative body's idea is you need a mix. So we, we have people that need a one-bedroom, we have people that need ten bedrooms. So realistically, the, the goal isn't to, to flood the market with all ones, it's not to flood the market with all three or fours. It's, it's a mix is what we need. Everybody has different needs and desires.
The, the biggest challenge is adding these, adding the units gives other, it gives opportunities for people to build on their properties. It's the parking that's not sustainable.
Yeah.
And they're assuming by density that people, less, there are less people that may need vehicles on a large scale. There are properties that are built with point-seven-five parking spaces per unit. And so it, it has been shown, supply and demand, by the way, or the, the public will adapt. If you need more parking spaces, then that dwelling is not for you, but others may not need the parking. And so I would advocate to agree to the, the ruling to incorporate this and supply and demand as the process goes. Like you had said earlier, there might be changes down the road, but if we just, we can't just say no to it because density is required, there are opportunities for people to build on, and if someone doesn't need the, the parking, they don't need it.
And, and I'll follow up a little bit on that as well. As a reminder, this is affordable housing, so this is income limited. They have to prove that the tenants fall in a specific category similar to that of what Maine State Housing currently uses. Those provisions are technically for the life of the property. There has to be restrictions put on the properties that it is income-based properties. The, the guidance has a little bit of, it's not super specific in the guidance as of yet as to how that is going to be done. So in, in, if we get an affordable base project, I would recommend that we put it into our conditions, because it, the state guidance isn't saying that they have to follow Maine State Housing Authority's formulas and stuff. It, it's, it says that they recommend towns put it in their local, so as, as we progress, I. as, as we progress, um, I, I think we would want to, um, make sure we have something in place to, to make sure it is income-based because that is the intent of this, this rule until the state might change that intention.
The other is, um, towns are, creating density is actually the, um, a formula where people are trying to bring people into the communities, the, the dense communities where people can walk to shopping and their services, not have to drive. That's why it's not in the rural parts of our towns. That you would need a vehicle, you would need a public transportation, but within these specific communities, those services should be more readily available so that cars are not as needed.
This makes me think about the, uh, the Stent, Stentinelle.
Yeah, I was too, but that wasn't affordable housing, so it wouldn't apply to them.
But aren't they income?
It meet their
It gets workforce housing, which is a different metric.
Oh, okay.
But they are attempting to get money from main housing as part of their financing packet. So this is something that might have helped them, or they might have utilized this and gone fully affordable had this been on the books prior to their submittal.
Because I, I mean, that scares me even more. I mean, to say it was affordable housing, they'd only have to have sixty parking spots.
Well, so that's what is, what made me think about it, because then I think of other projects we've had where, um, and I, and I get the point that not everyone's going to have a vehicle or require a vehicle if they work and live in town, et cetera, but there are those who do, and we're at the point now where it's basically one parking unit per, oh no, I'm sorry, one parking space per unit. Because we've had to significantly decrease the percentage of parking that we've even approved on this board. So that's what's going on in my brain right now as I think about this.
So let me just bring up one point. We, we're not really here to debate parking.
No, I know.
The state is mandating this requirement.
Yeah, well, this is
We don't get a say.
No, I, I agree, but this is what's going on in my brain.
Oh, no, this, this is
No, this, this plays into my decision on the bonus density.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think that's where we need to discuss too, because we have, we have the two density calculations, the bonus calculations, right, our existing one, and then the one that's been recommended by the state, right? Is that how I understand?
Required by the state, two-point-five times.
Yeah.
The underlying base density, yep.
So are we talking that we would honor both, like our current and theirs?
I wrote this thinking that you could evaluate that on a case-by-case scenario, so if a development comes in in an area of town where maybe there's no immediate abudders, and you don't feel that there will be, or there isn't a lot of public dissent towards development there, then maybe there wouldn't be something that would make you think that you can't go to twenty-five units per acre. It could be a multifamily building. It's not just a dense subdivision, right? So if you picture just one multifamily building, you could fit twenty-five units into an acre pretty easily. So I'm just leaving that option on the table, basically.
Yeah.
Right, if we left that, I think
It would only be for affordable, so that's the other piece.
Yeah, and that's fine, but it, we have a lot of conditional type of things that we work on that we don't really have good conditions to measure it against.
Yeah.
Those are challenges for us. We spend a lot of time up here talking about them because it's like, well, what's, what, when would we go this way versus not going this way? When would we allow this? So I think that if we're going to go down that path, I think we need to start thinking about what would those conditions be that would allow us to expand it? Like you, you laid out a few things. But then memorialize that so that we have something to, to fall back on to so that we understand why we're making the decision we're making and, and be consistent. I think that's our challenge.
Is there any
This be permitted with review or conditional use?
It would fall under the normal table of land uses, so multifamilies are PR, not CU.
But doesn't
But the added bonus, which is where we're talking about the conditional
So what we're talking about is we, we have the provision in the ordinance that allows you to get the density bonus with, when you meet certain conditions. It's not listed as a conditional use, but you have to meet certain conditions.
Doesn't urban not have a density requirement?
Urban does not.
So then we're only talking about residential development, the areas that we pro, I mean, you're less likely to want to encourage that dense of development. It's likely not, I mean, we're talking about the lots that probably don't have sewer extended yet. The density develop, uh, density bonus might be a way of encouraging the sewer and water development, but we're not talking about a ton of lots, because the urban area allows, you know, whatever you can build. So.
So say there's a lot that doesn't have water and sewer and they need to extend those lines out and pay for that money, and the only way to offset that cost?
Twenty-five units.
Correct. That would be maybe something you would consider.
But we're not talking about huge impact. We're just talking about residential development and single fam, what used to be single family.
Right.
Which will be residential development.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so we don't have findings of facts on this.
So this is another one that, if you guys are comfortable tonight, you would, um, just do an informal show of hands of, of, if you're ready to pass this on to city council. If you need more discussion, we could try to come back with more if you need it, um, whatever you guys feel comfortable with.
Of course, they can always change it too, right?
Yeah.
Again, everything in this ordinance is pretty much required by state law. There is no local that we're asking more or less from. This is, this is basically what the state is telling us we have to do.
Just the density bonus.
Yeah, the only thing is the extra density bonus.
Bonus is the only, only question.
That's right, Matt.
Motion to approve the Senate, the city council?
Second. All in favor? Seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Erin.
Good job, Erin, you did great.
Okay, so moving on to, uh, planning director's report.
So first, uh, I want to thank Oliver. He is here tonight in the audience. Um, he chose not to, um, seek reappointment. So I just wanted to say thank you for your service when you was here. Thank you for volunteering your time. You will be missed.
Thank you.
Next, I would like to say welcome to our new member. Uh, thank you for devoting your time and giving us some of your time is, time is important, so we appreciate you be willing to, to give us your time.
Welcome.
Applications, we, we have had a little bit of slowdown around Christmas, which is fairly normal. We are now starting to get them coming back in. We're starting to have some pre-apps again, so, uh, we had a temporary slowdown on projects. Next planning board meeting will be ordinance discussions as well without a project on it because we did not have any cases yesterday at site plan. But then after that, I think we're going to have projects rolling back in fairly steadily like we had prior to Christmas. Thank everybody that came to the, uh, holiday dinner at Pilot's Cove. Um, it was fairly well-attended and I think it went well. I think that's it.
All right, I'll open up to communications by the board.
Just wanted to say we do have one site plan for signature before you all leave tonight over on the table.
Okay.
Except for you, Todd, because you weren't here for the approval.
Were we all here for the approval?
You were. Thank you.
Castle and Crystal?
Motion to adjourn?
No.
Oh, man.
Communications, we're not done yet. All right, I'll, I'll kick off communications. Todd, welcome. As, as Jamie said, appreciate you, uh, coming out and, and standing up and like I said early on before we started the meeting, it is a little bit of a fire hose, but you'll catch on, seem to be catching on already, so good job.
You made one mistake, so I appreciate that.
It wasn't even a mistake. No, you did great.
I was, I had the wrong road.
No, 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 you did great. Your input was fantastic.
Um, so I didn't make it to the last formal meeting of twenty twenty-three, but I did want to, just wanted to express my gratitude to everybody on this board. I think we did a, we had a lot of transition last year, uh, my first year taking on this role, and then with a whole, really a whole new staff, uh, except for Jan. So thank you for still staying with us. Uh, just great work. Uh, I think we got a lot of work done last year, so I'm looking forward to another good twenty twenty-four. Echo the holiday party. Uh, it was great. I, I don't know who was in charge of organizing it, but it went really, I thought it was really, uh, it was a really good time, so. And then, uh, thank you for all the work you've been doing on LD two thousand and three. Uh, I think the fact that we're two days, three days into the, to the year and we're effectively done, that's a, that's a great, that's a great place to be. So whether we like it or not, but we met the, we met the intent of the law, so. All right, I'll open it up. Anybody else? Anybody else have anything they want to bring up?
I just want to make a motion.
No, I want to do it.
I'll check it.
Motion to adjourn.
Check it.
All in favor?